I call to all the school committee meeting of Monday, February 22nd, 2021. Let's give it the time of 6:33. First order of business, first of the businesses, is an apology. Over the last few weeks, I've been able to reflect on my behavior of our last meeting. And I'm left disappointed in myself at my my treatment with some of the people of Braintree. Letting my frustrations get the better of me. I will assure you, though, that that frustration is that same frustration a lot of people are experiencing now. But I let it get the better of me. And for that, I wholeheartedly apologize. And part of that is me obviously taking responsibility and making sure it doesn't happen again. Second part is for me to apologize to Mary Beth McGrath, our health department head. Through miscommunications and misinformation, she suffered a little. So going forward until this COVID situation ends, she or her representative will occupy a seat at this table to ensure that they can advise us. And also to ensure that miscommunications will not happen again in the future. Again, my apologies to Mary Beth McGrath. So now going forward, our first order of business will be the ratification of the minutes, open session and executive sessions of January 25th and January 11th. I'll entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Right, second.
Second.
Second. Roll call vote. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb, the mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kukoras.
Aye.
Mr. Chaff.
Aye.
In the chair, votes aye. Those minutes are accepted as written. We move on to B, which is communications accommodations. Frank, you want me to lead off on this one?
Sure.
Okay. If the communication has given me that I can tell you that we are entering into negotiations with the BEA this week. Its goal is to get the children back full-time and we'll make every effort to have that happen in our negotiations with the BEA going forward. Frank, you've got the rest of them right?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I would like to do, just to let you know, I would like to change, swap number three and four. We do have some people present with us tonight to do some presentations. I would first want to let you know, as you typically do, you have the South Shore Educational Collaborative Monthly Update in your packet that was previously distributed. And the second item is an update on the high school fall two sports season. And I believe Dr. Scully is with us this evening. Dr. Scully, are you on the panelist list? Yes, you are.
Yes, I am. I can see it if people can hear me.
We can.
And all set to go on the athletics update?
Yes, please.
Well, thank you very much, everybody, for having me here tonight, just to talk a little bit briefly about the start of the fall two sports season. I think we're all used at this time of year to see images of the equipment track heading south to Florida and seeing players making long tosses. And we look at the snow on the ground and we say, it doesn't feel like baseball season. Well, we have a similar situation here with the fall two season because it certainly doesn't look like football season outside. But that is what is going on here at BHS. So we started the fall two season today. It runs from February 22nd through April 25th. And like I said, it started today after school. Some teams are starting remotely. Some teams are starting this week. So we're using this week really to get everything up off the ground and going. We'll be fielding teams in football, track, girls volleyball, dance and cheer this season. So those five teams. I should pause at this point just to point out that Mr. Denise obviously got this process started. And Mr. O'Connell, our interim AD, has really hit the ground like he's been doing it for 15 years. So he is fully entrenched. He is like working through specific issues. And between Mr. O'Connell and Kara Hines, our athletic trainer, they've been getting everybody registered and up to speed and prepared to play and start the season. So we have over 250 student athletes this season, just in those five sports alone. We'll be using some outdoor space, some indoor space specifically for the volleyball. We'll be using some space at other schools in the district. And as I mentioned, this week begins with sort of a rolling start as teams get started. They deal with some administrative matters. They talk about the safety protocols that all the teams have been following and doing a nice job with so far this year. And then they work through tryouts and eventually we get rolling as the week goes and we get on to the next week. I should add as well, the Bay State Conference Athletic Directors are meeting tomorrow to talk about some final details in terms of all the specifics that we've all become accustomed to here in terms of spectators, in terms of sort of the schedule is set, but just in terms of tracking between schools and issues like that. So those conversations are ongoing, but our student athletes are often off and running.
Thank you, Dr. Scully. Mr. Chair, would you want to entertain any questions from the committee?
Are there any questions from the committee regarding the previous speaker?
Okay, let's play ball.
Duff splinter, yes.
Like football in Maine. That's what it was like when I was in high school. In September. Okay, and I would like to have, if I could, Assistant Superintendent Lee introduce number four and whomever it will be that will be speaking toward that.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. I'm quickly going to turn this over to Courtney Miller. But just in your packet, I believe you see the College Board AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award, which was recently awarded to the district and in Braintree High School. Through a lot of hard work, our computer program classes are actually run through our math department under the supervision of Courtney Miller. So I just want Courtney to just take a little time to kind of walk through that particular program and the award itself in terms of what it means for our students.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you guys so much for inviting me to speak to this because I'm obviously really excited about this award. It's actually the second year in a row that we've received this award in particular. So as Mr. Lee had said, it's the AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award. And specifically Braintree was awarded this for closing the gender gap in AP Computer Science Principles in particular. So for the previous two school years, we actually had 50% female participation in that course specifically, which we run for both AP credit and honors credit. So it's really exciting. I'm really thankful that the district was on board bringing this course to Braintree High School when it became condoned or created by the College Board. Because it's really a course that's designed to talk about the broader principles of computer science and computing. So it's a really great introduction to the computer science field for any student thinking about pursuing computer science in the future. BHS first ran the course in the 1516 school year for honors credit, thanks to Tristan Eckler, who had actually volunteered to be trained in the new curriculum. Ms. Eckler joined the teaching field from the engineering field. So it was a great fit for her. And she's certainly been drumming up a lot of excitement for the course for the past five years. This year, as I had mentioned, that we were running the course for both AP credit and honors credit. We actually brought an additional teacher on this year. Chris Grolo had stepped up and volunteered to learn about the curriculum and took over our honor section this year. So we actually have two teachers specifically teaching that computer science principles course again, which is what this award was for. In addition to the principles course, just talking about the computer science offerings in general at Braintree High School, we've also been running the more traditional AP Computer Science A course consistently for the past eight years. And that's the course that really gets into talking about the technicalities of programming and coding on a computer. And for the past five years, that course has been run by Madeline Jacob. And Madeline actually started the BHS Computer Science Club this year, where students are coming together. They're talking about different computer science offerings in the area. And they're also learning different programming languages. So I'm really excited to have that club up and running again, thanks to Madeline Jacob. Because I think it's not only giving students an outlet to talk about computer science, but is also certainly going to be a feeder and drum up even more excitement for our AP courses in the future. And then finally, we do also have an introduction to computer science course that is actually a semester course, can be a feeder to our AP Computer Science course offerings, but is also just a great introduction to the field to any student. Kevin Clark had taken on that challenge a couple of years ago, again, when the curriculum came to light through the College Board. And while we haven't been able to consistently run that course, just whenever we are in need of additional sections for math, we have definitely had the interest from students in taking that intercourse for the past four years. So the program is definitely growing. I'm so thankful that the district has been supporting computer science. Thankful that the math department has seen the need for it. And also specifically to the teachers who have gone above and beyond to really learn that brand new curriculum. It's different than the math education that they were all trained for, but have volunteered to take on that challenge because it's what's best for students. So we're really excited.
Thank you, Courtney. I don't know, Chairman Devin, if anybody has any questions related to the program or the award itself.
Are there any questions from the greater school committee?
Mr. Chair.
By all means, Ms. Dolan, you have the floor.
I don't actually have any questions. I just wanted to say that I'm really impressed with all the offerings that we have. And I'm really glad we're able to get a club up and running. And I think these are great offerings for the students. So thank you for shepherding that for us.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Anything else? Any other school committee members? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Greatly appreciated. It's always nice to see that we do what we can to diversify and offer opportunities for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Good evening. You can stick around, but you don't have to. We'll never know. Next, I'd like to go to item number B3 and have Guidance Director Anthony Garofalo discuss the College Board update. I do have an actual, I have a few slides that Anthony put together that I will share now or soon, so I can figure out how to share it. Anthony, are you with us?
I am, yes.
Just hold with anticipation and I bring this up. And if you can see it, go ahead and roll it.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hackett. So obviously, you know, the College Board has been a little, you know, COVID caused a lot of turmoil with the assessments for this year, AP especially, SAT. And they've had to adjust on the fly and literally on the fly. Because in March, when this happened, it didn't leave a lot of time for some of the decisions they had to make. Obviously, there's a great effect on our students, both our current seniors and our next year students as well. So I'm just going to give a quick update on specifically the AP exams and the SATs, the changes that were made, how it affects our students and some of the decisions we've made around that. So first off, with the AP exams from last spring, as you probably know, AP exams usually take place in the first two weeks of May of every year. When COVID hit and schools started shutting down, I believe we shut down March 12th. That didn't leave College Board a long time, a lot of time to decide how they were going to be able to administer exams, if at all. What they came up with, to their credit, on very short notice and a lot of technology ramifications, was modified shortened exams taken digitally at home by students. Miraculously, it worked very well. There was very few technology issues with our school and talking to people from other schools for them as well. The modified exams were, you know, most of them under an hour long. A typical AP exam is three to three and a half, close to three hours, 45 minutes for some of them. So they were much shorter, no multiple choice. They modified the curriculum and what they decided to do was kind of ended at the point where they thought most schools would have been at when schools were closed for the year nationally. Students were allowed to opt out of the exams. At Braintree, we've always had a policy that if a student takes the class, they do have to take the exam. We decided, because of many reasons that you could probably, you know, consider, you know, back in the spring, to allow them to opt out of the exams. We gave them that option, but you'll see in a second that most of our students didn't take that. The key with this is that colleges worked in conjunction with the College Board. And they pretty much, and I'll say all, but I can't speak for 4,000 colleges, but pretty much every college still was going to accept scores as they normally would. And what I mean by as they normally would is every college has different policies on what scores they accept, what credit they will give. Some accept a three, some accept a four, some in different subjects. So to the extent that we know, they all decided to go along with College Board, even though they were modified exams. And for students who are entering college this past fall, accept the scores as they normally would. 747 exams is what our students took last year. And if you notice there, where I say 95% of the expected, we gave the students the ability to opt out because every school nationally, National University College Board recommended. 95% is a high number. Late in the summer, I got a call from our regional rep from College Board just to point out how impressed she was with the number of our students at Braintree who took it. Because comparatively to with the school that she covers in the South Shore, Southeastern Massachusetts, most schools were not at that percentage. And that's a great testament to our students and our teachers. That many students still showed up for the exam when, if you think about it digitally at home, we had no control over it. Once we gave them the date, the sign up, the information, it was really up to them whether they were going to take it or not. And pretty much all of them did. 89% of our students still earned a three or above out of those 747 exams. The previous year, you can see that was 84%. We usually hover in the mid to high 80%. So you look at the results, our kids did just as well. There's obviously more specific details to that. But with the modifications College Board made and most importantly, with the preparation our teachers gave them, our students performed just as well as they normally do. We can go to the next slide, Dr. Hackett. This year, so this year currently, and I say currently because things could change any minute. We're keeping an eye on the news and what information College Board releases. But right now, they are planning on full-length exams and not modifying the curriculum as they did last year. That's what our teachers and students have been preparing for since day one. We're in line to fulfill that and be ready to take these exams for most accounts when we get, you know, feedback from our teachers. But they are preparing to do full-length exams this year. Recently, and I say recently, a week or two before February vacation, they just came out with what the administration options are going to be for schools. And there is the component, the normal paper and pencil exam in-school option. There are some potential digital options. As a school, what we need to do is sit down, and we're going to be doing that in a couple of days, one of many meetings I'm sure we'll have, to decide what are the best testing options. Now, we offer 20 AP exams, so it's not an all-in-one option. We're not going to say all of our students have to do it this way or that way. Some of it might depend on the dates that are offered. Some of it might depend on what subject it is and where we are or the teacher is in the curriculum at that point. So we do have a lot of decisions to make on that. As you can see, we're projected. I say projected because it's still a little movement in classes to give 790 exams this year, and that's across 368 students in those 20 courses that I mentioned. So there is a lot to be determined with that. What I will say is obviously, and not to give the cliche answer, we're going to find the best options where we think our students are going to perform the best. The initial thought on it and getting some feedback from teachers is that the old-fashioned paper and pencil may be the best option for our students because we know what to expect. We know what those exams look like. And a digital full-length exam, we don't quite, we're not prepared for that, you know. But there are students who are remote and don't come into school who might have to take advantage of that option. So we'll have more information on that soon, but there will be an option. The greater point is that every one of those 368 students across 790 exams, whether they're remote or hybrid, will have an opportunity to take the exam this spring. Now SAT, and we can jump to the next slide, Dr. Hackett. And I'm sure many of you have seen it in the news. It's been a lot in the news from College Board with the SATs for the past 12 months, but very recently, some big news that came out. So back in the spring, most test centers nationally had to close. And I can say, you know, we were supposed to be a test center site on March 14th. And if you remember, we closed schools on March 12th. And up until 24 hours before that, I thought we were giving an SAT. And all of a sudden, everything had to shut down. And that's exactly what happened for the rest of the spring for our current senior class, who was pretty much shut out of taking SATs. Now, having said that, nationally, pretty much every kid in the class of 2021 was shut out of taking SATs at that point. So pretty much every college nationally, and I'm, you know, again, I can't say for all, but when Harvard and Yale say they're going to go test optional for the class of 2021, pretty much everybody else followed in line. So the class of 2021 could at least sleep at night knowing that they weren't going to be penalized if they weren't able to take the SATs. Because pretty much every school they were going to apply to was going to go test optional for this year. And that's exactly how it's played out. However, as fall started coming in, August and September, some test center sites were able to open up. Braintree High School wasn't at the point that, we just weren't at that point in late September, early October. Which is why you might remember, because I know it was mentioned at one school committee meeting that we did offer the SAT school day, which is where College Board allows you to test instead of the traditional Saturday morning, getting kids out of bed and, you know, driving to a test center site to bring them in on a regular school day. We actually did it on Wednesday, October 14th. We tested about 240 of our seniors on that day, otherwise wouldn't have been able to test. In addition, a number of kids, probably another 50 or 60 or so, were able to test at various test center sites on a Saturday in late, early October or November. So I don't really have exact data, but we're going to estimate about three quarters of our kids still had the opportunity to take the SAT, which is very valuable. So on one hand, you might say, well, if it's test optional, what's the point? The fact is, even though schools are test optional, if you score well enough on your SATs, there is still a great value to improve in your application that goes off to these colleges. And for a number of us students, that's what they were able to do. So when I say the effects of class of 2021, the good news is they weren't penalized for it. But a lot of our students were able to benefit by taking the SAT at one of those either location or with us on the school day. Now SAT 2021 and beyond. So early indications are most colleges are going to extend their test optional policy that they implemented for this year. I use UMass Amherst as an example. They've already extended it through the spring of 2023. Harvard has already extended it for next year, Boston University. So there's plenty of schools. And it's coming out incrementally, like different, you know, tomorrow I'll get an email from a school saying, this is what we're doing. The next day. But I think they're starting to all follow suit. Nobody is trying to penalize kids who are going to be in the class of 2022 if they can't take the SATs. So many of them are going to follow suit with what they did this year. Having said that, same philosophy we had last year. If our kids can take the SAT, we are going to encourage them to do so. Now, the two other bits, big news that College Board released, which really is kind of related to what's happened with COVID, but kind of not, is they are eliminating the essay portion of the SAT permanently after this June. And the SAT subject test, they permanently discontinued as of today. So no kid can actually take those anymore. The SAT essay, just to give you a little background, it first came in in 2005. And some of you might remember, that's where we all got confused because the SAT now became, instead of out of 1600, out of 2400. Nobody knew what to do with that. And that's because of the essay. Well, 11 years later, in 2016, they made the essay optional, although they still kept it. And so up until now, it's still been there. The kind of quickest way I can describe it is the intent of what the essay was going to be for never really kind of took. Most colleges never ended up from 2005 on using it in a significant way for college admissions. And so that's why College Board decided to go optional with it. And that's probably my best guess is why they're saying we're just getting rid of it completely. Because most colleges weren't using it anyway. And so the benefit is now that the students can focus on the two main areas, which is the mathematics and the evidence-based reading and writing. The SAT subject test being discontinued is a little more of a surprise. The SAT essay, you know, the writing was on the wall. The subject test is a little more surprising. Just to give you an idea, up until now and right now, it's really your more elite, more competitive colleges in terms of admission that required the subject test. It's probably about 5 or 7% nationally that was still requiring them. Out of our students, probably less than 10% ever even took a subject test. So it's not something that was going to affect the mass, the majority of our students. But then getting rid of them is colleges saying, we're going to look at other factors in the application or maybe look at AP scores a little more if we're not going to look at subject test. So that's kind of, those two big pieces of news are really COVID-related, but not really. Those are things that probably they were thinking about separate from what's happened over the last 12 months. So the test optional effects and recommendations goes to what I just said. We are going to recommend our current juniors. I just sent out a memo to families today about it, that even though many of you may not need to take the SAT, we encourage you to try to take it at least once. Our plan is on April 13th to offer the SAT school day for the junior class to as many as we can. But some of them are also going to be signing up for those testing sites on a Saturday, which are opening and, you know, limited space and capacity, but they are opening. And as far as the long-term effects in the college admission, what I can say is this. It's hard to know specifically because we don't have all our acceptances or denials yet. And March is kind of a big month, especially for some of your more competitive schools. But for the class of 2021, I don't see a big difference yet on what's happening admission-wise. That is for the class of 2022 and beyond, obviously, it's hard for us to tell that. But if it follows the same philosophy, the SAT test optional, we don't think it hurt our students, but it did help a certain amount of them to a great deal. And our initial thinking is that's still going to hold true for our current juniors. So that's just a little bit on AP and SAT. And I'm glad to take any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions from the greater committee? Comments? I don't even know if I'm, I'm not muted now.
No, you're not.
Okay, wow.
He just did that. No one has any.
Does anyone have any questions on this? Comments? All right, hearing done. Obviously, and with Mr. Garofalo, thank you very much for doing the best you possibly can to fill this gap that's a chasm from, you know, last year, trying to get our children accepted to good colleges as well as this year's. I know the SATs were difficult. I had a senior that took them and, you know, she'll be going to school next year of her choice. And it's, well, it's one of the few bright spots as far as going forward and doing the best we can to get our kids going on to the the next chapter of their lives. Thank you very much for making that easier for us and administration for helping out. Moving on.
Next item, let me, I'm sorry, I'm going to call up the, I'll share the agenda again here. Transition.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda, I will let Mr. Lee introduce this item, number five, BPS Music Department Highlights.
Thank you again, Dr. Hackett. And again, we have some special guests to kind of walk through some of the accomplishments. As you sure all understand, it's been a very challenging time for our music department with COVID. There are a lot of restrictions that relate specifically to this department. Singing has been almost outlawed in certain environments in our school system. And the challenges for our teachers have been real and for our students as well. But they've been incredibly creative in terms of how they've approached it. And we have Director Matt Sawtell in Norwood Pearson here to kind of talk a little bit about what they've been able to accomplish in this environment. Mr. Sawtell?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having us on, be able to share what's going on with the music department. First, I want to put out a big thank you to the music staff. They've been working so hard and creative to make opportunities for these kids in such a weird environment that we're in right now. But we would like to highlight, outside of the classroom itself, we have the opportunity for students to still participate in some of the extra ensembles that are available to us. We work with the MMEA conference where it's people from, students from all over the state come together and audition to be part of it. We're part of the southeastern districts. At the senior level, we had two students audition and they also made it into the all-state. Now, the all-state performance festival, it's usually, it's the top scores out of all the people that are auditioning across the state. It's usually put together and done at Symphony Hall. Obviously, this year, everything is going to be a virtual setting. But it's still great that they were able to go in there. They had to submit everything virtually as it went through the judging and coming back from there. At the junior level, which is grades seven through nine, we had nine students from east and south make it into At the junior level, which is grade seven through nine, we had nine students from east and south make it into those programs from chorus, band and orchestra. And then we were also part of the SEMSBA, which is Southeastern Music Educators Band Masters, it's a lot of letters. But we also had seven students make it into that program. Along with this, we've also got three of our own teachers that are on the committees to, of these groups. So they're getting out there, getting into the community, really getting the, representing Braintree outside of our own town itself. I don't know, Mr. Pearson, if you want to add anything in there?
Well, I just want to say, it means a lot to be able to acknowledge the hard work of these kids to Dr. Hackett and the school committee. This is a, like Jim Lee said, this is an extraordinarily challenging year. And not only singing, try getting kids to play instruments when you can't have them in a room together. It's been very difficult and the kids who got into these festivals who are competing with other districts around the southeastern part of the state, they have put in an extraordinary amount of work that should be admired. And I don't know if we're allowed to read names or not, but if it's possible, I'd like to acknowledge them on the record, at least from east.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Oh, fantastic. Okay, so I just want to acknowledge from east, we have Bridget Curran, who got into district chorus. Esther Lee, who got into SEMSBA on violin. Jonathan Lee, who got into SEMSBA on percussion. Adrijja Matra, I hope I'm saying that right, got into districts in SEMSBA on violin. Lucy Nguyen, who got into districts in SEMSBA on violin. You can hear my son in the background. Nora Piccolo, who got into districts in SEMSBA on bass clarinet. Isabella Tran, who got into districts chorus. Key Van, who got into districts on cello. And Chloe Zhang, who got into districts in SEMSBA. Did they get in, but these students exceeded the minimum expectations, the cutoff scores. Many of them got first chair compared to all the other students in these surrounding districts. So I hope you're as proud of them as I am, and with that, I'll turn it back to Mr. Sawtell. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. So I'll read the other students as well. From South Middle School, we had Konstantin Olivegody. Eighth grade, she made it into junior SEMSBA as an alto in chorus. At the district, we had Nirmay Gupta, who made it in for chorus, and Marco Zavala, who made it in on cello. At the high school level, we had Dixia Kavalapara, who's a junior, made it into chorus as a soprano, and she also made it into the all-state festival. And Raul Prasad, who's a junior, who made it into band, also first chair for districts and for all-state on bassoon. So again, as Mr. Pearson has said, these students have put in a tremendous amount of work on top of adding even more of a virtual content into their already virtual lives. So it's a huge applause to the work ethic of these students. Also a huge applause to the work ethic of the staff in the music department, Braintree, that have been working above and beyond to create the atmosphere where these kids are still succeeding in such a difficult time.
Thank you, Mrs. Sawtell.
And also a great thanks to you for your leadership and keeping music going within the school department under tough circumstances. And I always appreciate when you send along, and I don't know how you do it, the compilation songs from kids who are singing from different locations. It's, it is, it's a nice break in the day to see those, so thanks for all that you do. And certainly, Norwood, thank you for coming along tonight, we appreciate it, and you can jump off now, make sure your kid's okay, because it sounded like a little bit of a scream back there, so. Thank you to both.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to C, which is gift approvals, gifts to schools, February twenty second, twenty twenty one. The following gifts to schools have been donated to support the mission and vision of the Braintree Public Schools. First is base date textiles, several checks, seven checks of four hundred and five dollars and fifty cents. Do I have a motion to accept in a second?
So moved.
Okay. Okay, our second is, our second offering is the South Middle School Gift to Schools totaling one thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and four cents. One check in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and four cents from Life Touch School Studios. Do I have a motion to accept in a second?
So moved.
Thank you. Our third is the inadequate school kindergarten center, gifts totaling three hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. One check in the amount of three hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-nine cents from Life Touch School Studios. Do I have a motion? Thank you. Fourth check from the Heager for Mayor Committee, gift to schools totaling two hundred and fifty dollars. One check in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars from the Heager for Mayor Committee to be used by CPAC. That's from one of our former members, Lisa Heager. Do I have a second, a motion in a second to accept?
So moved.
Thank you. Lastly, we have the Braintree Women's Club donation gift to school totaling five hundred dollars. One check in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Braintree Women's Club to be used by the BSC Helping Hands Program. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
In a second, roll call vote for the acceptance of these wonderful gifts. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lemare?
Aye.
Ms. Doland?
Aye.
Mr. Gukoris?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you for your generous donations that help make our schools better. Thank you each and every person. Moving on, we have three, which is from the superintendent and staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to bump this around a little bit, I'm going to actually do B first, and then I will go to A and then have C. So the only reason why is because B is very just, really just a quick update from me to you about full-day kindergarten registration or kindergarten registration for next year. As you know, we got early again this year as we have in the past, and everyone's done a great job. Many thanks to Mary Ann Cari, who really kind of pulls this together and all the administrative assistants and all the buildings and the principals. I'm pleased to tell you that we have right now, as of right now, two hundred and eighty-four total registered kindergarten students. And of the two eighty-four, two hundred and forty-seven are registering for full-day kindergarten. So those numbers are really pretty consistent where we, where we would normally be this time of year. I know, obviously, with the year that we've had, and we have certainly received calls about, you know, the uncertainty and what is next year going to look like. Our continued message is that we, we don't see any reason why we will not be back full-time in person for next year. And, but what we are doing is we've delayed the actual deposits for the registration process or the payments, the other payments that follow. We normally have a payment schedule that has all final payments done and to us by August. We're going to push that out into the fall a little bit, so that we can just get a little bit more certainty before we start having people provide us with funding. So I think that's a really good piece of good news for us. You know, obviously, we all like to have full-day kindergarten universal. We know that we've talked a lot about that, we know that there are a lot of reasons why we struggle to get there, primarily issues with, with, just with, with space. You know, we'll continue to have that as kind of a goal, but we look, our numbers look good so far for next year. So that's, that is my update on that. I will share now, just like to introduce, actually have Mr. Lee, if you could kind of set up the conversation for A. And Dr. Scully, I know is still with us, and he can kind of do some of the more detail.
Dr. Hackett? May I please interrupt you with, I just want people to realize that in the past, when we've done this registration for kindergarten, there is some anxiety, I don't think there's ever been a year in which we haven't been able to get the kids in that want to attend. So we know it can be rather, an anxious time. And in the past years, I don't think we've ever had a time in which we weren't able to get someone in. So let people understand that that's part of the process and we'll get you there. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's a great point. When we changed the registration process and brought it earlier in the year, and to your point, for the last five or six years anyway, we've been able to accommodate all students who wanted full-day kindergarten, so. Mr. Lee?
Thank you again, Dr. Hackett, and very quickly, I am again going to introduce our guest, Dr. Scully, who's already presented tonight. But it is that time of year, in fact, it's a little bit later than normal for the program of studies for the high school to be presented to the school committee. Again, typically, we focus on the changes to the overall program of studies, which is, I'm sure you recall, is quite an extensive document. So Dr. Scully is going to walk you through some of the proposed changes for the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two school year. And with that, Dr. Hackett, I'm sorry, Dr. Scully, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I know that everybody's had a chance to review the sort of brief descriptions of the proposed changes. As Mr. Lee described, every year, we go through the entire program of studies. BHS administrators, Mr. Garofalo in the guidance department, obviously, the curriculum directors, all take a look at everything that's in their department and sort of reexamine it. Some of the changes are significant, some of the changes are really sort of editorial or sort of points of clarity. So there's a range of suggestions and proposals that we have here, knowing that you've had a chance to take a look at it. I'll just describe each one briefly, and then I suppose if it's okay, Mr. Lee, I can take questions on individuals, but I'll try to describe one in sort of a nutshell, if that makes sense.
That makes sense.
Okay, the first item is really one of those editorial or housekeeping details. We'd like to clean up the competency determination language in light of recent DESE waivers. Without going into great detail, because MCAS was canceled last year, there is a waiver process, I shouldn't say waiver and exemption process for science in particular that will affect multiple grades. We wanted to just clarify that in the program studies, that's not new information, that's just being clear about it. The second bullet point concerns the sequence of science courses at BHS. Currently, ninth graders in two of the levels take biology and in one level take an introductory physics class. This proposal would have all students in each grade take the same science class. Another science proposal, the next one after that, is the elimination of what we've called here the additional lab period for all the non-AP science courses. By this, I mean, all science, just about all science courses have an associated lab period, which is not attached to the period that the students meet in, but meets during a separate period. Mr. Lee actually could talk about some of the history of this, is how it gets to that point. We've run without it this year, and our proposal is to do that again next year and subsume those lab activities back into the course itself. Along with that, another sort of housekeeping detail would be, following up with that, we would adjust the credits required for graduation. That's only to reflect that those science courses with an extra lab carry an extra credit. So there's no change here to any graduation requirements in terms of the number of classes, in terms of the number of, you know, by subject, what every student needs to pass. Just a total number of credits to reflect that change. Introduction of a new math course, this would be called Math Foundations. This, the purpose of this course would be a catch-all to get students caught back up. I think everybody on this call knows that our math curriculum is exceptional and it really is truly advanced far above and beyond what the state requires for MCAS. As a result, though, sometimes when we get new students, it's difficult to place them appropriately. This could be students transferring in, this could be English learner students who are new to Braintree, are new to the country in some cases. And this course, this course would address gaps in their previous knowledge and perhaps do it as quickly as within the year, so that they then could be placed in an appropriate math class. Another new class would be a pilot word-language elective, as you know, right now in word-language, we offer Spanish and French. This would be a pilot one semester course called Introduction to Latin in the Roman World, combining both language instruction and a history and culture element. And then a number of, a number of changes that reflect what our practice actually is at the high school. One would be the elimination of Level Four as a course designation. We have not run classes as Level Four in a number of years, certainly that dates to prior to my arrival at the high school. The elimination of three different business courses, which don't run on a yearly basis, have not run in the last several years. Then the elimination of a course called Geometry Three B. So we have three levels, one, two, three, in geometry, we have, in some math courses, we have a Three A and a Three B. Three B this past year was not run as a pilot. And in checking with Ms. Miller, Mr. Garofalo, talking to the administrators, we think this has worked well. And so we would like to continue that and make that change permanently. And then the last point really is a catch-all, there's a number of places where, as you all know, when you turn back to a document, you think you've read it entirely accurately and made all the proof, all the proofreading edits that you needed from the previous year, but there's always a few spots that we need to check out. So in a nutshell, those are the changes that we propose, and I can certainly talk about any of them in more detail.
Thank you, Dr. Scully. Chairman Devon?
Yes, are there any comments or questions from the greatest school committee concerning this, this information? By all means, Ms. Cobb-Lemare, you have the floor.
Thank you. Dr. Scully or Mr. Lee, just a follow-up on the elimination of the additional lab periods. So I know that, is that something that you think is beneficial or, you know, is that something that we would want to try to keep, or I'm just, I'm just curious as to why we would eliminate the labs?
Sure, so I should clarify that, because it sounds like a much bigger change than it is. So we're not eliminating labs per se, we're eliminating the extra period that floats in a separate block for those students. So those activities would be subsumed within the class, so there would be some loss of instructional time overall. That's one of the reasons why, if you think about it, an English class will meet six times out of seven days. And a biology class was meeting six times out of seven days and then had this one extra block that was used for lab activities. There's a long history to this, at one point, those two classes would be connected, and that's how it works in our AP courses, that would remain exactly the same. So advanced AP courses would keep a double block, but we're now at the point where that lab period has been separated from, you know, the old-fashioned name would be like the recitation period or the lecture period. And so what we found is that, one, it's a question of equity with other, with other courses. But we also found that if those activities are being done in one period, then they would fit in a period for the course itself. So instead of having an additional block, now students will be able to take the lab with their own teacher. So right now, you may be in a lab with students from two or three or potentially four different classes. Our staff is outstanding, they're able to stay together week to week. I think it puts a little bit more pressure on them by bringing those students back and doing the lab activities in their course. They'll take, they'll now take the lab with their own teacher, which I think will help the continuity. And I think the important part of this, as we were thinking about it, is that we should also reduce class sizes, because science teachers will now be freed up to take additional sections instead of teaching those labs.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gukoris, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just a comment and a question. First, I'm delighted to see that Latin is, is back. I think that, as I remember from, from my days at Braintree High, that really was very helpful with vocabulary and things like that, it served me well, certainly in my life, so I'm glad to see that we're putting some emphasis back there. And then a question, I think it was two business courses that were being eliminated, and one of them is a career course. And is it just lack of interest? Because I looked at the description and it seems like a pretty relevant course, so I'm, I'm just wondering why we would eliminate it.
Yes, you're exactly right, it's based on student interest and all the business courses, I think, are appealing. I think what we have found is that students are choosing other courses that maybe are more targeted or more specific in the business area, and those tend to attract enrollment. On one hand, you could say, well, we could just leave these courses and see what happens if students sign up for it. But one sort of unexpected outcome is that if you have, say, six students who sign up for one of these electives, and then the elective doesn't run, sometimes they have difficulty then getting into an alternative elective, because they've made that choice. They have a second choice as the, as the scheduling process plays out, they sometimes end up, not all the time, but they sometimes end up with a challenge for getting into it. So it's not a reflection on the nature of the career-based work. I actually think that's something that as a, as a school, we can build toward. I actually think that's something that, as a, as a school, we can build towards even more. Some of the business courses, I think, address many of those, many of those needs. It's just this particular course has not been drawing enrollment over the last several years.
Yeah, and, and my thought was maybe because we have so many students that go on to college, that maybe the relevance of that course is kind of come and gone.
I, I think that may be a part of it. We do have, in some of our specialized programs, we have, you know, very targeted courses, college and career readiness, opportunities for students to, to really explore those in a hands-on way. As a general offering, it, it hasn't attracted as much attention.
Thank you, Dr. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Kors. Are there any comments or questions regarding this? Was something, someone saying something? Okay, that must have just been interference. Okay, Dr. Hackett, on to C, COVID-19 pool testing update.
Thank you, Chairman Devon. Thank you, Dr. Scully. So as you know, as we've talked about, we have, we have sent information out to you. We want, what we wanted to do is follow up with you tonight to talk about the COVID-19 pool testing in partnership with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And with us to, you do have information in your packet, but with us to kind of cover it in a little bit and also answer any questions you might have is our Director of Nursing, Jeanette Sally. Jean?
Yes, hi. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. First, I'd like to thank the school community for this, their help in dealing with this very difficult school year. The parents, the staff, the administration have all been very good in communicating with nursing staff, letting us know when there are positive cases or people at home that need to quarantine. So I really appreciate that and I wanted, I want to let the school community know that. They've been a great help in keeping our school community safe. And I also just want to give a brief update on our COVID numbers. So we are really mirroring what the state has happened. We started low in September. We started to creep up in October, November. In December, we had 143 cases. In January, we had 160. So far in February, we have fifty-six, but we are also coming off of February, February break. But it does look like our numbers will be going down, not as high as they, they were in January. So that's good information. And again, that is a tribute to our school community and their help in the collaborative process in managing COVID-19 in our schools. So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has put out another tool for us to have in our toolbox, and that is pool testing. And what that is, is that in a classroom, especially now in the smaller classrooms that we have at this point, there may be nine students and a teacher. So you might have about ten students, I mean, ten people in a classroom altogether. And we, we would come in and test all of those people in that classroom with a anterior nasal swab. So it's just up the beginning part of your nose. You do it four times on one side, four times on the other, and you put it into a test tube.
You just need to stop demonstrating it because it gives, I get nauseous. Thank you. Personal, it's not you, it's me.
But I want people to realize that it's like, it's not the one that goes way down. And so it's, it's very, very simple. But anyway, so, and the Department of Public Health says that students in grade two and, and above can do this themselves under obs, observation of a trained tester. So we're hoping to get that underway. And what happens is it's a PCR test. All those 10 samples would go in one test tube. They would be taken to the Broad Institute, which is the testing lab that does these tests. They would test them, and within 24 to 48 hours, we would get the results back of that pool. If the pool was negative, then we'd just go on with life and everybody in that pool would be assumed to be negative. And if a pool came back positive, then we have the ability to test the individuals at the school with a rapid antigen test. It takes about 15 minutes to do that, to decide who was in that pool that was positive. And if we found somebody who was in the pool that was positive, then they would have to follow the COVID-19 protocols that we have for the school district. If nobody, it's, it's rare, but if nobody in that pool comes back positive, then we have the option for people to do an individual PCR test, which would be performed at school. The swab would be gotten at school and that, the swab would then be taken to the Broad Institute, but it would be one swab in the test tube. So it would be an individual one to determine who was positive in that pool. Now, why would we want to do this? We seem to have been managing very well because the hope is that we will increase in-person learning and we want to know where we are at this point and what would happen when we do that. And it gives us the ability to intervene early with real-time data. So in other words, if we put kids in classrooms and there's more people around, what's going to happen? Will, will it be a problem? It won't be a problem. We'll have a weekly test on those people who want to do it. Now, this is voluntary. The data obviously will be better if we have the majority of people participating in this activity. But it will give us real-time data to know where we are with COVID-19 in our school buildings. And hopefully, I'm hopeful that it will give us the data that will make people confident in that, in the schools and that people will, will want to be there in a longer amount of time. I think as we, we have a lot of things in our favor. Obviously, the mitigating factors that we are putting in place, the six feet of distance, the masks, the, the physical distancing, that that's really been very, very helpful. And now with the start of the vaccine and people getting vaccinated, we will see less and less of COVID, hopefully, in our community. And we will also be able to demonstrate where it is in our school building. So Desi has rolled this out. It has started in, in, I think there were 89 districts or 80-something that were ready to start today. We have not started as of yet, but everything is in order. We have had, the shipments of the supplies have come, I was told today. The things that we are lacking is the consents that we have to get. And I'm waiting to, I have a conversation with Beacon, Project Beacon, who will give me that information this week on, on Wednesday, and I'll get that information out and that's done online. Information will be sent via ParentSquare to parents. And they will, they will have the ability to sign up, as will the staff in those buildings. They'll have the ability to sign up through Project Beacon and they'll have their accounts, and that's how they'll get the information. No student nor staff member will be tested without proper consent. The information, pool information doesn't go to people because it's not an individual. But if there's a positive pool, those people will be notified, those families will be notified, and they'll, the children will need to have the individual test done. I do think it's, will provide us with valuable information. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is paying for this service through the month of March. And then it will be the responsibility of the district to pick it up. So if we can get it up and going in a robust way for the month of March, we'll see what kind of data it gives us and whether or not it will be purposeful after that. I have three schools at this point who are willing to pilot it with me. And that is Ross Elementary School, Manadequid Kindergarten Center, and South Middle School. So hopefully, we'll get them up and running by next week. And I would love to see the other schools follow suit right afterwards. It is a, it, it is a, a issue of having manpower to do it. That's what may be holding us back. So I will have a discussion with Project Beacon about that as far as, it would be easy if we had staff that would be willing to get trained, a teacher who would be willing to oversee them. But I don't expect that to be something that we would require. I would hope that maybe some of them, as they see this testing being done, would volunteer to do that. But it is a process and there are a lot of logistics to it. So I'm hopeful that we'll get three up by next week and we'll get the others going after that. The other thing that we also have, that I will be trained on tomorrow via webinar and will be able to train my nurses to do so, and we have the supplies in-house now for it as well, is the antigen test. So we will be able to, with, again, this is always done with permission. We don't, we don't do things without parent permission. If a student comes to the health office during the school day, not sent from homeschool, but during the school day, they develop symptoms during the school day, they can come to the nurse's office. And if we believe the symptoms are consistent with COVID-19, we can do the test in-house and it will be a 15-minute turnaround time. And we'll be able to say whether they do or they, they don't have COVID, which is helpful for us to know that here's a sick person in school, be it staff or a student, that we will be able to determine at that moment whether or not we need to be concerned about the students in the classroom, where that student came from.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the school committee at this time?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me. I'm gonna go with the first person I believe I heard, which was, Mr. Kors, you have the floor.
I think it was Ms. Saros, actually.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's okay.
Okay, Ms. Saros.
Um, I just want to thank Jean. Definitely helpful tool in our toolbox. Every little thing helps out definitely with, you know, testing. And what, a question for you, the three schools that you have doing these, the pool testing, did the other schools defer so far or were you not able to get them to do it?
These are, these are actually, well, South is, is the smaller of the larger schools. But these are smaller and more manageable because we need to roll out the process and see how many, how many bodies we need to be able to, to do this. So these, these were the ones that were willing and enabled, but also the, the most appropriate to start with.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just make a point just to follow up on that question.
Please.
Also, just to clarify that the state, as, as Jean mentioned, does pay through March. There are still costs that we would have to probably incur, that we would incur through COVID funding. Once we get to March, at the end of the, of the pilot, to her point, it's optional as to whether or not we want to continue. I think it just becomes a question of what has the value been of doing this? And, and again, at that point, we would be paying for the test moving forward, but we would be able to apply COVID grant funding for that purpose. So that would be a, a discussion with the school committee in terms of, we could come back to you, show you the data and talk about what, what the next steps should, should be and should look like.
Thank you, doctor. The floor, Mr. Kors, you, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Jean, I have a question. Is it possible to prioritize athletics? Because it's my understanding that many of the issues have, have surfaced from there. So can we add them into the, the early list of who we're gonna test?
Yes, and I, again, I hope that by the second week in March, everybody will be on board. And definitely, if this, and this could, other districts have done it. Other districts have made it a requirement in order to, to participate in the sports, to do that. And we certainly can do that. Again, we would need to have parent permission and would need to be protocol for the sports teams. But hap, absolutely happy to do that.
Excellent. And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll wait to see if there are any other questions or comments.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So I'm just curious, as far as, first of all, it's, it's interesting how long it took for them to actually get this done. They announced it like, what, two months ago, maybe more? And we still had, we, so we've received a rapid test, so we have the ability to do that. As far as the pool testing goes, what, what goes into, so you're saying that only three of our schools want to do it? So what goes into getting the pool testing done? Is it, I mean, who, who would be responsible to do it in these three schools?
So you, you looking at her right now, but I'm hoping, I'm hoping to get some, some assistance. The school nurses in some of the schools have, have offered to help, although they have a very lot of stuff on their plate, especially with the contact tracing. And they will be responsible for the follow-up contact tracing and the follow-up antigen testing. Because anybody can be trained to be an, an observer for these, the pool testing. But the nurses will be the people doing the antigen testing.
So they've given you the ability to do something, but not given you the resources to do it, basically, is?
Well, I'm having a, I'm having a conversation with Project Beacon on Wednesday because those are some of the things that I still have questions on, is, is the actual logistics on a small school. That would be very easy to go from class to class to class with 10 kids and, and do, do it for those schools. But when we get to places like South Middle School, what will that look like? There's been schools that have had the teachers trained and the teachers have watched the kids. They, they actually, I'm sorry, Dr. Hackett, they actually have, they actually do this first and demonstrate it, put it in the test tube. And then the other kids, they all do their hand sanitizer and they do it and bring them up and put them into the, the test tube. So it's the, it's the actual process. If they did it like that, would probably take 10 minutes.
Yeah, I think, you know, if it was better thought out by the administration coming forth to us and not our administration, the upper administration. You know, when you look at some of these test sites that they set up, everything's done through private vendors. And my assumption was a private vendor was gonna come in to do the school testing, that the burden wasn't going to be put on the schools or the school nurses. Because as you know, they've done all the vaccinations for us, they've done all the contact tracing for us. And I can completely understand, you know, that they're too busy and overwhelmed with work based on the amount of tasks we've asked them to do, and much appreciated, by the way. So I, I had thought that they were gonna have a third-party vendor come in to do it. And I guess you gotta work with what you have at this point, based on what they've given you. So I appreciate.
It is a third, it is a third-party vendor. Project Beacon is the third-party vendor and they're responsible for maintaining the website, getting the consents through their, through their website, through their software. They're the ones that will bring out the in, information and do the, do the training. We can have some of their people and that will be part of my conversation on Wednesday with them. But that may delay us from doing it. And as we move into the end of March, if it's something we want to do, then it will be more expensive for us if we can't find the, the in-house, the in-house people to, to perform that responsibility.
Well, I'll, I'll just say that, you know, they should have done a better job at presenting this, preparing it, getting it to us in a, in a timely fashion. We all know that the children are not going to be vaccinated, so it is important to keep testing and, and, you know, contact tracing, et cetera, as we find positive. So hopefully, hopefully, when you speak to them, they'll give you the assistance that you need so that your nurses can continue to help vaccinate and do other things that they've been doing for us with contact trace, et cetera, and not get bogged down with the pool testing.
And this, especially in the biggest schools, they, they will not have the, the time to do that.
Thank you.
Oh, can I just, can I just say one more thing? It's not, it's not that those three schools were, like, like they, the others didn't say they, they wouldn't do it. They were just the, the ones that said it first and the most logical ones to start out with.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kors, you still, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, you know, I think we can see that the tools of, are start, you know, are pretty much in place to be able to expand in-person learning. And I think that, you know, if you follow what's happened over the last couple of weeks, you know, from the president to the CDC, to, you know, many, many other organizations, it's kind of incumbent on us to start to put at least some, some projected dates out there when we want, you know, when we'd like to target getting back to full in-person school. So I'd like to put a motion forward that, for that purpose, we target March 15th as the day that we would like to get the high school back five days a week, fully in-person. And the rest of the school system, April 1st, five days a week, fully in-person.
Okay, I have a motion on the Okay, um, I have a motion on the floor. I'll need a second.
Can I second that?
Okay. Let's go with the discussion part. Are there any members of the school committee that have discussion on this?
Through the chair, if I may.
By all means.
Um, working throughout COVID, um, it's, it was so scary for a lot of people, but I just want to say with proper PPE, I feel we can completely do it, do this. We need to do this. So we have the thing, you know, the the stuff in place, why not take advantage of this and try to get these kids back? They need school, you know, that this is important. I think we really need to consider this.
Thank you, Ms. Saros.
Yeah, proper PPE. We can safely do this. And science is showing that the downward traject- trajectory, trajectory, sorry, of, you know, the infection, we need to consider it.
Thank you, Ms. Saros. Any other comments from the school committee?
Mr. Chair.
By all means, Kelly.
Thank you.
Um, excuse me, Ms. LaMay, you have the floor. My apologies.
That's okay. Thank you. Um, yeah, I I mean, I'm agreeing, in agreement with that. I I also want to be able to ask, um, Dr. Hackett, if we'll still be able to maintain the six feet of distancing if we do that.
I I guess it would depend on the scope. If we're talking about, um, bringing, um, but well, it depend on the scope and it depend on the the school we're talking about. With the current numbers at the high school, um, if if that those numbers hold, uh, we would, as you know, we've already collapsed the courts at the high school. Uh, so we were, and we're maintaining six feet of physical distancing. We know that we can, uh, make accommodations for lunch, uh, to maintain six feet. So with the current numbers, we're we're able to do that. Um, if numbers increase, we, you know, we have other considerations we'd have to, we'd have to take, uh, make. Uh, the other schools, um, really, pretty much overall, um, we would have to be going to three feet, uh, without ex, I think, without exception. And we, uh, we have been administratively working on plans um, for full in-person return. There, you know, it does, it is gonna require, um, at some point to transition to three feet physical distancing. And, um, our goal would be to maintain six feet for lunch as, um, as recommended by, uh, most health experts, uh, because of the fact that the students would have to have their masks off.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. Ms. LaMay, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the, uh, committee?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
By all means, Ms. Dolan.
I am, um, definitely intrigued by the idea of the high school in particular, due to the six-foot distancing that seems to be available there. And I know that that um, planning is underway. I guess while we have Ms. McGrath here on the call, not to put her on the spot, but I guess I am. Um, if you are willing, I would love to hear your perspective on this as our town health expert.
Sure, certainly. Um, thank you to the the chairperson and the school committee members for allowing me the opportunity to participate in your meetings going forward. I do appreciate that, especially during this pandemic. Before I make any comments about, um, Ms. Dolan's question, I I would like the opportunity respectfully to provide some comment that I really feel it's very important that I mention. I want to thank Mr. Devon for his apology, but I feel that that more clarification around that apology needs to be made in what was termed miscommunications or any misunderstandings, misinterpretations that may be abound regarding the Board of Health, the Health Department, or my involvement in any decisions that have been made regarding the school reopening plan or the school learning plan. As there are impressions that have been given to parents in the community that those decisions have come directly from the Board of Health, the Health Department, or me. So I want to set the record straight tonight that absolutely no decisions whatsoever regarding the school reopening plan or the student learning plan have come or been made at all by the Board of Health, the Health Department, or me. As the school committee is aware, I have participated since August in three school committee meetings before this evening. And during those school committee meetings, I've been very straightforward in my comments and my recommendations, and those are what those were, recommendations. The decisions that have been made regarding the school reopening in the student learning plan have come directly from the school administration and from the school committee. You can see that I'm a bit upset about this because not only have I received very unpleasant emails, very unpleasant phone calls, but I have been approached personally with my, in the presence of my own child by people that are upset about the plans, that they think I had something to do with, which I did not. And that is absolutely unacceptable. I don't appreciate that happening when my child was present, nor would I expect any parent, school committee member, member, or school administration to find that acceptable, because it is not. So you can see I'm a little bit upset about this. But moving forward with that, I look forward to working with the school committee to offer you any recommendations that I can to bring forward, um, you know, the the possibility very soon for students to return to in-person learning on a five-day-a-week basis, and I look forward to that. I also want to make it perfectly clear that I am always available to speak to parents or the community by phone or in-person in my office. I will, I have always made myself available, and I will continue to make myself available. So I just wanted to put that out there because I don't want there to be any more miscommunications or misunderstandings with regard to anything that the Board of Health, the Health Department, or I am involved with. So I thank you for the opportunity to hear that. In in comments, uh, in my my notes to Ms. Dolan regarding her, her request, I feel very strongly and have for a long time, and I've made that perfectly clear that I think it's very important that not only the students get back to school physically, but also for their their mental and emotional health. I think that all of the, the combination of all three are extremely important. And at this point, I'm very concerned about the mental and emotional health of the students, because I feel like they're being lost. And I know that the school department, the school administration, and the school committee are doing everything you can to try and assist with that, but we need to do better. And I know that you're trying to do that. I truly do. And I, there are all these components that are coming together to try and make that happen. So in early September, you you spoke about coming back before the, um, on a school committee meeting to review the plan in place and maybe make some modifications in November. I don't recall that ever happening. In December, I did appear before the the, uh, school committee and spoke about my concerns about the activity that we were seeing COVID-wise as a result of Thanksgiving. And then we were then going into the Christmas break and again expressed a concern about that and asked to appear before you again on January eleventh. Um, I understand that that meeting was canceled, and this is my friend, the first time that I've been before the committee since before Christmas. So I do appreciate the opportunity. What we have seen science-wise and data-wise of late, within the last month, is fortunately, our cases are going down, and I think that everyone is seeing that, not only in the state, but possibly as well in the country. And I hope to see that trend continue. I'm a little concerned that it will continue, but I'm always concerned about that. But I do feel like at this point, with the numbers that we're seeing and the cases that we're seeing, again, it's community spread. It's not happening in the classrooms. There is a concern that we are seeing a lot of activity around sports, which is what Mr. Kukoris had mentioned, and more in particularly around hockey and basketball. That's where we're seeing a lot of the cases that are involving our school-aged children. So there is a definite concern about that, but I've always had a concern about that. But I know that I've talked before about let's, we need to jump into the deep end and see what's going to work. And then if there has to be a point where you have to pull back, then you do have that opportunity, but we're not going to know until that happens, until you jump in and see what's going to work on a more in-person basis. So as far as the six feet, certainly, as you understand, DESI does allow minimally three feet separation. And, um, I did recommend a six-foot distance. And the reason for that is because it's easier to start at six foot and go backwards to three foot than it is to start at three foot and go forwards. And you've done that. You've done the six foot, and you can see how well that's worked. So at some point, the three foot may be an option, it may be a necessity. And and that's with the understanding that if that does happen, which it is allowed, that there may be an issue that if there is a positive case, that more people within that circle would be impacted and have to either isolate and quarantine depending upon results. But that would be the understanding going into it. So, yeah, I feel very comfortable offering a recommendation to the school committee that you should strongly consider in-person learning on a more routine basis, whether it be four days a week, five days a week, but certainly more than it is now. And lunches can be offered as well.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Um, again, um, your treatment troubles me. I I wholeheartedly apologize for that. And like I said before, there'll be a seat at the table going forward for you or your representative at all of our meetings until we emerge from this, this situation. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from someone from the school committee on the original motion and second?
Mr. Chairman.
By all means, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I thank, uh, Ms. McGrath for all the hard work that she's does all the time, and she's done a wonderful job in regards to vaccinations and contact tracing, et cetera. So appreciate, uh, her input. And, uh, please do not call her. And make sure if you're gonna email, email one of the school committee members. Uh, in regards to school issues. So, you know, I just, i- if you look at where we are today versus where we were, um, a few months ago, we've come back, we've come to a point where our numbers have declined. We're at a number, we've vaccinated over fourteen hundred people in the community in with, uh, partnership with Brewster Ambulance. And we'll continue to do that. Um, so if you look at the number of vaccinations, if you look at, um, the contact tracing that's done, uh, within the schools by the school nurses, and you look at what's done by our Health Department, and you look at the fact that now we have some rapid tests that we can use within the schools. Uh, we're looking at this pool testing. Uh, these are all the thi- these are all the things that we need to have in place to get us to, um, full days of school. And might I note that in a a full day of school, we're not looking at a hundred percent participation. Uh, there are a number of students that are in remote that will probably not come out of remote. There might be some students that go into remote. But the reality is we don't have, um, a hundred percent of our population of students going to school. And my add, there are some schools that will be able to do six feet. You know, East Middle School has, uh, the space to be able to do it. Um, so the reality is, I think, any child that wants to go back to school that's in remote should be able to do so, and we need to find a way um, to accommodate that. And when I say we, I mean the administration, because that's what they do. Um, we set policy and they administrate it. And I think that based on where we're at today and the direction we're going in is good. And I just think that at this point, we obviously need to have, um, transportation. We need to work on transportation, not just for the middle school, but we work, need to work on transportation for the high school. We cannot continue to force parents to be driving their kids to school. I live off of Pond Street. I've driven uptown street when kids are being dropped off to school. It is a complete catastrophe. There's no other way of describing it. And this is, you know, obviously, now we have combined cohorts, but the reality of it is, we've done all of the work necessary to get us to the point where we could have full school with lunch so that students can have a normal school day and have the in-person learning that they deserve and that really, um, it's our, it's our responsibility to provide. So I do know that, you know, as the chairman mentioned earlier, that, you know, this is a, um, discussion that we're gonna have with, um, those individuals and and teachers and members of, um, different, uh, unions that are gonna be teaching the children, et cetera. And I understand that, and that is something that, you know, we'll we'll move forward with. But the reality of it is, is we have reached a point um, through really the due diligence of our Health Department and all the work of the school nurses to bring us, uh, to a to a situation where we can bring our students back full day, uh, five days a week. And that's really the goal. And I agree with the maker of the motion and and the second, et cetera, because the reality of it is, we have space in schools that is not used. It might not be the most optimal space. But when we filled up our mi- our elementary schools, we started to take libraries and turn them into classrooms. We did many things to adjust and adapt, and that's what you have to do. Uh, Town Hall has been open since July. We do have, um, you know, a a situation where we try not to have all all, uh, members of each department in that department, uh, every day. So we do have some remote for sure, but similarly, we don't have a hundred percent of the students in school. So we have operated since July. And it's interesting, because there's many communities that are not doing that or just started to reopen their town halls. So we've been one hundred percent, um, you know, open and folks have been able to come in and and do their business as usual. Yes, we have protocols in place. Yes, we have social distancing. Yes, we require masks and things of that nature, but we've adapted as a society, we've adapted as a town to deal with this, with the COVID, um, virus, and we'll continue to do so. And I just think that it's it's time. It's time for us to move forward and to make this happen. And I support, uh, the students back in school, and I hope that the rest of the committee does as well, because it's our obligation uh, at this point to make it happen. So I think the dates are reasonable. And we'll be heading into warmer months with, you know, some of these other schools that, um, may have more challenges with spacing. So um, I hope that based on the the science, uh, that is out there right now, we do the right thing and we bring our our children back into the schools five days a week so that they can get the best education, uh, the one that they deserve. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor. It rhymes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Dolan, for a second time.
Thank you. Um, I think science also says that vaccines are pretty effective. So what can we do to get teachers vaccinated uh, as soon as possible to help enable this plan?
Mr. Chair, I'll answer that.
Please, Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Well, I don't know if you've been watching the news lately, but, you know, we, um, kind of got cut off in the middle of, uh, some great work, you know, um, Ms. McGrath and Nicole Tob have just put together an amazing, um, vaccination clinic, probably the best, probably the best in the state, because people are raving about it because of the way it's been organized. And it's the work that Mary Beth has done over the years with flu clinics that have made it happen. So obviously, we have until March first, and then we don't get any more doses. And I think we were received our last amount, and it doesn't equate to, there never dose is necessary to finish our seventy-five in older crowd. And also, it doesn't equate, uh, to finish our sixty-five in older crowd that have already registered. But I'm committed to making sure that we continue to partner with Brewster, anyone else, and I will continue to fight. And I will continue to, um, request doses from the secretary, from the governor's office, because it's not over. We have a a a great method of vaccine vaccinations here and doing the vaccinating, and we're gonna continue to do it. And I I don't care what it takes, we're gonna get it done. And as far as the teachers are concerned, they are on the list. The governor has not authorized them to be vaccinated as as of this point, a phase two. But when that becomes, when they become, uh, able to get vaccinated, um, you know, there's, there's a a number of means. If we don't have the means through, uh, the doses here, because right now there's an overlap between seventy-five growths that we're trying to finish here and sixty-fives that are now eligible. So I'm going to make sure that our elderly population is vaccinated first and foremost. But with that being said, with all of these super sites, if he, if the governor goes into a phase where teachers can get vaccinated, they most certainly will have the ability to go to one of those sites. I don't want our elderly to have to drive fifty miles to get a vaccine. So we're gonna continue to fight to get them vaccinated. And I think it's gonna happen very quickly, um, as far as um, as far as moving to the next phase, because the, the doses are going to keep, um, you know, the number's going to keep increasing. But the reality of it is we can't guarantee when it's going to happen. We know it will happen, whether it happens in April or whether it happens uh, in late March, I don't know. But I will tell you this much, when it does happen, um, they'll be available to the teachers through one of these mass sites, if that becomes the uh, only uh, means. I know that CVS has released some vaccines and, and all, they fell off very quickly. But there is um really a, a message that came down from the CDC that said that we can reopen schools without vaccination, and we have to go with the science. And, you know, I think that at this point, there is a commitment to making sure that everyone gets vaccinated, and we'll do that. But as I said, the first foremost is taking care of those elderly folks that are on our list right now and getting them done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, any other comments or questions from the school committee?
Through the chair, if I may.
By all means, Ms. Saros for the second time.
Um, sorry. I just want an update. I know that Desi guidelines for bus capacity changed. Is there an update on that? On whether we're moving forward to putting more children on the buses, which is necessary?
The short answer to the question is yes. Uh, actually, a survey went out tonight to our current hybrid uh, in-person students in grades one through four uh, to see whether, one, students are currently on the bus, want to continue to ride on the bus, because um, with the new protocol, there won't be even three feet of physical distancing on seats. It'll be about one, um, it'll be six feet back from the driver. So we want to make sure everyone who's on the bus now is comfortable with that. And then those students who are uh, attending in-person hybrid right now, um, if they are interested in transportation, we want to know that. And the first uh, measuring tool is, is about, is one and a half miles, more than one and a half miles from the school, which in generally, in normal times, is about where we uh, stop transportation, other than some areas where, you know, there's just, it's, it's uh, we need to provide it because there are other mitigating circumstances with traffic or crossings. Once we have that information, um, then we'll know what our capacity is to uh, have more students come on. Uh, and we're also going to do the same exercise for the middle school. So our goal at the middle school is not only to increase number fifth and sixth graders who are in hybrid in person on the buses if they want to ride, but also to be able to get our seventh and eighth graders on as well. Um, you know, the issue still is that we still have capacity issues, even, even with this new distancing. There are still going to be two rows of seats that aren't going to be used. Uh, it does bring us to around forty-five or so on a seventy-two passenger bus. So it's, it's certainly much better than where we are. It's almost double where we are right now, but it's not full capacity. Uh, so we really got to make sure that we're careful about not over pro- over promising services if we, if we can't deliver them. So uh, we, we're anticipating that we'll be rolling out um, K uh, grades one through eight, uh, hopefully by mid next week.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gacorus. If I may, please.
Um, just to follow up on that, because I think that's been a, that's been almost as big an issue trying to get kids back to school as, as sort of the science, right? Um, why are we not focused on using COVID money to acquire the, the necessary um, transportation needs that we, we need to service the community?
I guess I'd need more detail, Mr. Gacorus, if you have in mind.
Well, I, I, i- if, if the issue was capacity, can we get more capacity? You know, can we figure out a way to, you know, I, I don't know if it's capacity. I don't know if it's drivers. I guess I don't understand why we're not doing more to figure out how to get this transportation issue solved.
Well, I haven't talked about what we are doing, so I appreciate the question, but um, you know, before we judge if we're not doing more, we ought to know what we are doing, but we can have that conversation another time. Um, the short answer to the question is, it's hard for us to find drivers in normal times. Uh, I can tell you that it is a day-to-day white-knuckle ride, no pun intended, um, to fill in for drivers who are sick, who are out, who are absent. Um, we are stretched very thin, as you know, we own our own buses, we own our own, uh, our drivers work for us under a um, teams just negotiated contract. Uh, we can't subcontract the work that we provide. Um, so that's not an option. We do subcontract some work around special education transportation to uh, out of, out of district sites, collaboratives, residentials. Uh, but all the internal um, transportation is ours. So until the governor lifted, uh, or the, or the Department of Education lifted the restrictions on, on distancing on our school buses, since I, our hands were tied, I mean, with twenty-five students on the bus, uh, we're running all the drivers that we can run, our drivers, we do have many of our drivers who are, some of our drivers who are um, are not able to drive at this point for very legitimate medical reasons that are documented. Um, you know, we've had this discussion several times now as we start off the school year as to how we're going to handle it. So we are working on it, um, and we will be able to increase over the next week or so.
Okay, a- and I appreciate the effort. It's, I'm not trying to um, insinuate that we haven't made that effort, but I think it's just like some of the other comments we've made about being flexible in spaces in school for spacing and things like that. I think, you know, we've been, we've been tasked many times by public comment and, and emails that we're not thinking outside the box enough. And I think, you know, when you think about the situation that happened because of COVID with buses, we really did turn things upside down for parents. And it's, it's just, you know, it's difficult for me to understand why we can't figure out a solution that, that works. We've been talking about it for, at least since October and in finance and operations, so it, it just, you know, I guess we could have more conversation.
Um, Mr. Gacorus, we do have a subcommittee meeting this coming Thursday, so that's probably the best way. What I'd like to do is keep on message with our original motion, which was by uh, March fifteenth. We have the high school in full time and the rest of the district at April first. That was the original motion. And second, and I believe everyone's had a, a, a chance to comment. Are there any other co- questions or comments from the school committee? Okay, hearing none. Uh, as the chair, I usually speak last, whether it's quality, quantity, we'll see. Um, I, I know some, some months ago, um, I, I, I was very cautious about doing this. Um, but in talking with the experts, obviously listening to Ms. McGrath and others that have educated me uh, far more than I thought I would, and uh, listening to uh, Ms. Saros and others that work in the healthcare industry. I mean, I, I myself am supposedly an es- uh, uh, essential worker. All of us are wearing masks eight hours a day, eating, you know, in a different room and things such as that. But uh, you know, I, I, I've, I've learned that we have to get to a point where we learn to live with this, with the proper PPE, and that the the mental well-being of our students is something that I believe that we're, we're tipping towards uh, uh, something that could potentially put them in jeopardy. And I do think at some point in time, when we do go back full time, we are going to have to monitor their mental health and see what effects we've ha- that, that have happened. But that's a, a, another issue for another time. So with uh, with that, I'll take a roll call vote for the motion of uh, the high school back at March first and the rest of the district April first. Roll call vote. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobbler, Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Gacorus?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe? And the chair votes aye. It's a unanimous decision. We'll be bringing that forward in negotiations. Uh, moving on uh, from the school committee, we have a policy and education subcommittee, which is chaired by Ms. Dolan. She has five policies that uh, I believe they're uh, for second readings and approvals. You ha- have them in your packages. Ms. Dolan, please, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, so does anyone have, anyone in the committee have any questions about policy two through five? Um, actually, I'm going to say one through five, because all of these have been before us before, um, and have minor changes. So does anyone have any questions from the first reading?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gacorus. Oh, excuse me, the, it's her report. She, she um, takes all questions.
Okay, through you. I have a question on uh, number one, the approval of handbooks. There's a section at the end that talks about um, the superintendent having the ability to decide which handbooks need to be approved and which don't. Is that part of the boilerplate language from the MASC?
Um, I believe it is, yes.
Okay, I, I don't agree with that. I don't know how the rest of the committee feels, but I think any handbook that pu- is published in the, in the school system should be approved by the school committee. So I would, I would want to move to strike that or change that language.
Um, we will bring that back to the subcommittee for discussion then.
Okay.
Okay, that will need a motion to table or return to subcommittee. Is there a motion to um, return that to the subcommittee?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second to, all right, we have a second. Roll call vote to return that for, you know, shall we say, for perhaps a little bit of a rework. Um, Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobbler, Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Gacorus?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so that will be returned. So now we're dealing with, excuse me. Let me hand it back to the chairperson of the subcommittee to handle the other four.
Any other questions or comments on the rest of the policies? Um, seeing, Mr. Chair, do we need to take these individually, or can we uh, request a motion for the group?
Well, I think, um, well, let's, let's, let's go with um, uh, the first policy, school distancing. Do I have a um, a motion to accept in a second?
So moved.
Second.
And I have a second, okay. Policy of school choice. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
In a second, okay. On four, student rights and responsibilities. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
A second, okay. And lastly, student records. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, roll call vote. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobbler, Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Gacorus?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Those uh, motions are approved and will be uh, put forth into our handbooks. Okay, we are now on to public comment. Um, one of the things I want to say, because uh, we have roughly a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty people, and uh, there were only about eighty-six people before, so what's that, fifty-some odd people? Um, and for the people that weren't here, the first thing I led off with is was an apology to the people of Braintree. Um, I stated that I had taken, uh, I had reflected on my behavior and past me, and past meeting, and I was disappointed in it. And that was, I'd like to think that it was uh, put forth due to frustration, a frustration that all of us have felt um, and all, all of us are experiencing. But nonetheless, I'm supposed to set a better example, so I apologized. And then I also apologized to Mary Beth McGrath for the, her treatment. Um, and I also stated that going forward until this uh, COVID situation ends, that she or her representative will occupy a seat at our meetings to ensure that these types of communications and uh, mixed communications will not happen again. So now we'll be entering into our public comment part of the um, the uh, the, the evening. It's twenty minutes, because we do have to enter into executive session. Um, it's twenty minutes. This is your chance to speak and to be listened to. It's, it's really not point and counterpoint. So, but let me, let me um, um, try and broach something new here. If you have a specific um, uh, a question that is i- in detail about your child, if you send that to administration, that will be handled by them. If you have general questions that should be, uh, that should be emailed to the school committee at our next meeting, I'll be making um, uh, some time available to address some of these emails, so that uh, we don't have them fall through the cracks, so to speak. So with that being said, we're entering into our uh, public comments. Mr. Uh, excuse me, Dr. Hackett, our first uh, participant this evening?
Andrea Gre- Andrea Greve. You are muted.
Good evening. Greve. Ms. Greve?
She has dropped off.
That's okay. Okay, and our next person?
Karen Carey?
Ms. Carey, good evening.
Hello, how are you? I promise I won't use three minutes this time. So, um, I know I've been pretty vocal for the past like ten months or so, and many times throughout this entire school year, I have disagreed with a lot of things that you guys have said and done, and I have expressed my frustrations. I want to say thank you. Today, I want to say thank you for finally listening to us and hearing what we've been saying. Um, thank you to Mary Beth McGrath for, you know, speaking and letting everyone know that it is safe and the science is there and says that the kids are safe in school. Um, we've been researching the facts and we've been looking at the science, and I'm happy to hear that all the members of the school committee uh, believe in that as well. Some of you have had the goal of getting kids back full time since the beginning of the school year, and I appreciate that you never gave up on it. Remote learning has been frustrating on so many levels and has never come close to being comparable to in-person learning. I speak for the many families that have been struggling throughout this entire school year that have felt that they didn't have a voice. Thank you for listening and finally doing what is best for the kids mentally, socially, and academically. I hope that in meeting with the BEA that um, we can get this moved forward and that those March and April dates will stand. So thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. Our next person
is Sarah, if you could give us your last name when you come on, please?
Um, Sarah St. Laurent. Um, so I have some questions about the pool testing. Um, so I definitely would like to have my children participate in pool testing, but I have an unanswered concern that I'm hoping that either Ms. Efsali or Ms. McGrath or Mr. Dovens might be able to address. Um, obviously, with the increase in testing, we're going to see some increased positives. Um, and so I'd love to understand what the threshold is for when that starts to impact the return to school. So just like we saw in the summer, when more people started getting tested across the country, uh, positive results can, you know, started increasing as well. Um, and my concern is that as we do some of the pool testing and see those positives, that that's going to impact our ability to return to school um, at these increases. Or we're going to shut down classes, like are, is there a threshold that you guys can kind of publicly put out there for this is when we'll start to um, you know, say it's too high and we have to shut down this classroom or shut down this school or what have you?
Okay, uh, let, if I, if I may, first of all, I, I, like I said before, you have a particular question. If you could email that to us, we will get it to the proper person so that we can get you the most, you know, competent answer. I am simply not a public health official in no way, shape, or form. But if you email that to us, you can even put it to me, I'll get it to the proper person and get you an answer right away. And, oh, and by the way, put your phone number on there so I can call you, please, thank you. Our next person, Dr. Hackett?
Sorry, yes, uh, Ella D. Oh, Ella, you actually are, I just got a message from Zoom. You're using the older version of Zoom. Um, so I'm going to have to promote you to a panelist, so hold on for just a second. Can you hear us now?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Can.
I'm sorry, actually, this is Sandra Dietzick. Um, good evening, how are you? This, I'm on my daughter's uh, Chromebook, sorry about that, thank you. Um, so thank you for taking my call. Um, I'm actually speaking um, as both a biology teacher in Braintree for the past twenty-two years, as well as a parent of a student who's entering the high school the next school year. Um, I do feel it's imperative to make it known that the elimination of the lab period is reducing science instruction by about twenty-five hours per year. Um, lab activities are the main way that we engage students in the Um, lab activities are the main way that we engage students in the science content while practicing and enhancing their science skills. In addition, this proposed reduction would take place during a time in, in a part of the country where biotechnology and medicine are a driving force of the economy and the workforce. Um, just listening to this meeting tonight, how many times have we said, listen to the science? Um, over the past six years, since the lab block was detached from the science classes, science teachers have fought to keep the lab period. We hesitantly agreed to the lab period to let it go this year during the pandemic with the assurance that the lab period would remain once the pandemic is over. Obviously, this is now changing. Of course, the science teachers would still conduct lab activities within our individual classrooms because that is what's right and that's what's beneficial for the students. However, with the reduction in instructional hours, the labs would need to be used in ways to teach content and skills and drive instruction rather than as a way to supplement and reinforce them. I urge that if this change does occur, the school committee members, please keep in mind that some large-ticket items would need to be purchased so that each individual teacher can run labs within their classroom simultaneously. Although I am disheartened by the potential reduction in science instruction, I am confident that the Braintree science teachers can make this work if we're given the proper support. To address that the removal of labs is being suggested as a way to reduce class sizes, wouldn't a better approach perhaps be to hire an additional science teacher? Shouldn't we be thinking of ways to enhance our science curriculum rather than reducing it? For example, maybe adding some other science electives. Currently, we only offer three science electives, anatomy and physiology, forensics, and engineering. I really urge you to look at other programs of studies in neighboring communities that offer a much wider diversity of full and half-year science electives. From what I'm seeing, the removal of the lab period just seems like a Band-Aid fixed to a larger problem. I really do enjoy teaching in Braintree and we have a great um, community, science community, a great director. Um, I guess I've been here for a long time. Um, so I just wanted to leave with that and say thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your opinion.
Sorry.
Our next participant?
I am working so hard to get there.
Yeah, and it's, it's tough.
Now, uh, Michelle, uh, if you could just give us your last name when you come on.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening, Michelle.
Hi, it's Michelle Hume. Um, I know that you said, don't ask a question, Tom, but it's a quick one. I just was curious, um, I know we have space constraint, constraints at all of the other schools. Six feet versus three feet, have um dividers been um looked into? Do we have funding for that that came through COVID funding and cannot be a way to solve for that problem for that April first date?
I think that's an excellent question as far as uh, um, allowing for that type of a payment. That's a subject that I'll jot down and we'll bring up at our um, our um, uh, operations and fi- operation and finance subcommittee this coming Thursday. So it's on the list, but I'll tell you what, Michelle, I'll get back to you as to what happens there.
Okay, we have uh, uh, Vanya. Actually, she dropped off.
Okay.
We do not have, whoop, there she is, okay.
Okay.
Vanya. You are unmuted.
Hi Frank, thank you. I just have um a quick question. Well, first, I'm sorry that you're leaving, Frank. I, um, I don't want to see you leave. I feel like we built a relationship. So my first question is, um, it's going to be a real quick one about the transportation for the MECO students. So if we're increasing the amount of kids in the school buses, how is that going to affect the MECO kids? Because I, I was told that there's a very short amount of MECO students being transported to school because their parents are having transportation difficulties.
Um, the MECO transportation is, is separate transportation. I don't, I don't think distancing is the issue for MECO students. So we can, I can talk to you offline about that.
Okay, all right, no problem. Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you for your time, Vanya.
Stephanie McLaughlin.
Ms. McLaughlin, good evening.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you very much to the school committee and all the members. It was, um, it was wonderful to hear that vote and to hear so many people um agreeing with what we all had been hoping and praying for for months and months on end. So thank you all very much for listening to us and for um, you know, and for finally coming to that conclusion based off of the science and everything else. Um, my comment is in regards to um assuming that and hoping that things go as planned in the high school. In particular, the high school does end up going back to the in-person bowl for five days. I would like to just make a, a plug or put a plug out for senior activities specifically. Um, I know, you know, hopefully if schools do, if the schools do get back to where they need to. Um, I'd love the planning to happen or at least that we're aware of. All those seniors that have really missed out on so much and maybe a little bit of um attention around those planning activities to try and make it as normal um of a spring and, and graduation type time um as possible. And not to be trying to uh at the last minute, trying to pull something together. So, you know, we're, we're in February now, so we have plenty of time, but I'd love to have some attention specifically on um seniors and for that matter, junior activities, but most, most importantly, senior activities. Um, and, and if, you know, to get that planning started soon rather than later.
Thank you. Good point. I've written it down. Thank you.
That, uh, that concludes the questions.
Okay, thank you for all the people that um publicly commented. Um, I appreciate the fact that they were, shall we say, um, um very nice to us, so that means I wrote all, everything down. I'll be getting back to as many people as possible, as well as uh emails, trying to get back. If you put your, yeah, e- a email, I'm sorry, your cell phone on there, I'll try and return the phone calls. Uh, okay, now I believe we're to the point where we have to go into executive session. And I lost my glasses, this is cool. Um. Now, two things.
I'm going to read that, Mr. Chair.
But I just.
No, I'm not, it's, I'll squint. By all means.
I just, just a clarifying question. I, I, with the motion that was made, I believe, um, Mr. Kacor that you intended to say March fifteenth, but I think at the end or at some point, you might have said March first, which would be Monday. I just want to clarify what your intention was so that uh if it is Monday, um, I'm going to pass out once already. I'm going to not do that with video cameras.
My motion, the motion was March fifteenth, I think. The second time the chair read it, he might have said March first.
Yeah, what else is new? I get aggressive sometimes. It's the fifteenth for the high school and April first for the rest of the district.
Everybody else, yeah.
All right, now we're going to enter into an executive uh, uh, session. Consideration to enter into executive session pers- uh pursuant to chapter thirty A, a section twenty-one A three to discuss a strategy for the negotiation of a personal service contract and/or collective bargaining as an open meeting may have an detrimental effect on the legal position of the school committee as declared by the chair. Now, I need a motion to enter into executive session and a motion to end this meeting because we're not coming back out, because no decision is going to be made in said executive session. So a motion to enter into executive session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Have a sec, okay, motion second, roll call vote, Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobbler Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kacor.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are in executive session. I will entertain a motion to close this school committee mem- meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Kacor. Excuse me, Mayor Kacor. My apologies.
Aye.
These glasses aren't doing much better for me. Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobbler Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
George Kacor. Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We are now adjourned. We'll be sending out the message to enter into executive session. Thank you all. It's greatly appreciated. To the rest, have a good night.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Yes, thank you.